All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order of the Manchester Planning Board for November 12th. Good evening, everyone. I'll take a roll call. Who? Laura Honey, here. Chris Olney.
Here.
Sarah Creighton here. Oh, wait, do we have Sue Filbrick here.
Here.
Mary Foley and Gordon Brewster. This meeting is being recorded. Hold on. Let me just... Are you sure? Can you just check with him and see if he's indeed recording? He said yes? We are. Okay, because I don't have a little record button.
Yep, we're good.
Okay, good. Thank you. This meeting's being recorded. So I'm going to open the continued public hearing for self signaling. Do I have a motion to open the hearing? I guess I have a motion.
Yeah, sure.
Motion for Chris.
Second.
And Gordon Brewster, yes. Mary Foley, yes. Peter Morgan, yes. Sue Filbrick, yes. Sarah Creighton, yes.
Yes.
And...
Yes.
All these days, I'm gonna find out which one of these things we actually need to do roll calls and which ones we don't. Okay, so thank you, everybody, and thank you, self signaling team, Mike Globski, Peter, and rest on you, Gordon. You need to work behind the scenes to refine your plans and to come, I think, to some draft conditions. What I wanted to do tonight is our staff predominantly, Mark Resnick, Chuck Dam, who is online, and Greg, have been meeting with self signaling to kind of refine some of the details. And I think we last left off with the big detail of what to do about Atwater Avenue as the sort of outstanding big question, lots of smaller questions, I think. So I thought we would start with Atwater Avenue and the outstanding issues rather than work our way through the conditions 1 through 15 so that we can make sure that we, that the board feels that the approach we're moving forward with and has been sort of negotiated by our staff is appropriate. So first, I want, I gave you all the draft conditions, and I'm gonna give you a slightly redlined version, just to simplify things. That, based on some stuff that came up today. This is just the numbers 13 and it's a two-page number. So take two pages, it should be conditions 13 through 17, okay? And so we'll start with 13. Share to the public. So the idea here is... Sure. The idea here that has been arrived at as a proposal by Mark and Chuck and Greg and... And Gordon and I have been listening in to understand this, so we could understand what they were proposing, is that self signaling would, the applicant would pay an amount to the town, and then the town would undertake the improvements on Atwater Avenue, the construction of the bike lane, and some improvements to the culvert that goes under Atwater. And the idea of this, there was discussion, you'll see a fourth one, which is the... The fourth one is the, is some water and sewer line work, and the proposal right now is to take that out, we can talk about that. And the rationale, I think, is that the town wants, first of all, it's a town road. While it is customary for applicants in this kind of situation, it's not a subdivision, to pay some improvements along the road that accesses their property, that is a common thing that happens. That the town wants to do work in Atwater Avenue, particularly to serve the potential building site at the old compost site. And so if the town is gonna do that work anyway, it makes sense to put the work of a sidewalk and repaving on the town's, in the town's domain or responsibility so they can do it on the schedule that makes sense. It doesn't make sense to have self signaling do improvements to Atwater Avenue, and then the town come along and dig them up and redo it. So that's the rationale for that approach. In terms of approach, does that, Gordon or Mark, is that...
Yeah, I think it's fair to say.
Okay. And then the, so then we come to what are those improvements? And as you can see, self signaling in their draft, through the staff team, was propose some dates. And I think we want to talk about how much the town wants, in our special permit, in self signaling special permit, how much we want to obligate the town for dates. There might be some other agreements or that go on the side of that. But then the question, the three categories, and I'll summarize them, and then we can talk through each of them. The first is pedestrian improvements and traffic calming along with Atwater Ave. And I think we have a, is this a draft sketch of that, or what's up on the board there?
It is.
That's the proposed improvements. And the proposal, if I can accurately summarize, is on the north side of Atwater, right? The Essex side of Atwater, a pedestrian path separated from the street by a wooden guardrail.
Correct. So School Street's right here, Beaver Dam is down here where the Loop Road is, and then it's just in a section so it can all fit on the same page. So Atwater from the entire length from School Street out to essentially the end of the right-of-way, which is the Loop Road down here, whatever sidewalk. The majority of Atwater, we took a hard look at kind of what is within the right-of-way right now, what would be able to fit off of the existing pavements. On the north side, there's enough area to create some kind of a buffer, two feet, three feet of grass strip or crushed stone. And then following that, there's a four-foot paved sidewalk. No change of grade, one of the more important items in any conceptual design for Atwater is it's entirely within floodwaters. So it enormously complicates permitting, the change grades out there. So we're looking at essentially just prepping and paving a four-foot sidewalk for the entirety of Atwater Ave up to the point of the culvert. Now, at the culvert, there are two existing guardrails, and we've done measurements and kind of looked out there. And what we're representing on this plan is a relocation of the southern guardrail by one, two, three feet to create enough distance between both sets of guardrails to contain a four-foot sidewalk, some kind of separation between the pedestrians and the traveling, and then our existing traveling. And that goes basically from the bend in the road where the culvert's at now, again, up to the end of the right-of-way of Atwater, which coincides with the Loop Road.
So the language proposed is that it's conceptually described in this plan because this isn't a full design yet. And permitting conditions might preclude certain areas being as, you know, some modifications in that. So let me just walk through these three sections, then we can come back to them. Oh, let me just also say that when we had talked about a sidewalk with a granite curbing, first of all, it was very expensive, and I believe Chuck priced it out, and self signaling's team priced it out. In addition, it means that now stormwater is contained within that curb, and there would need to be stormwater devices, structures. And it potentially is subject then to the stormwater rules. It would be, so you're increasing flow, potentially point flow into the wetlands there.
Yes. The nuance of kind of the raised sidewalk is installing a curb, changes drainage flow paths within Atwater. Right now, it kind of cheats towards the wetlands, some of it cheats in the opposite direction. If you put a curb there, runoff can no longer just go where it goes right now. So now we have to capture it, convey it, treat it, recharge it, and then discharge. So it drastically complicates the design and permitting.
By doing the raised sidewalk, when you should be changing the grade, even if it's a little bit, but it's over a long, like, the time, long span, it didn't look like...
Yep.
And that's another floodwater.
And I guess the goal, it seemed to the team that was working on this, if I understand it correctly, that the goal was to create a protected pedestrian walkway. You know, it's not heavily traveled right now, but it is, people speed along that road. Also maintain the striping that was, this would include the striping that was in the original plan, and the beat tables. But all of those things would be the responsibility of the town for it as part of, as compensated by this sum of money. So I'm gonna take the three of them together. The second one is the construction of the bike lane from the state highway, that's 128, to Atwater. And that was a requirement of the Mass DOT of self signaling. As I understand it, the rationale here, again, is that Chuck has contracts to do this kind of work already. He has unit prices to do this kind of work, he's doing this kind of work elsewhere. And so he felt that it was within the scope of what he could do as part of the larger town contracts.
He can control the timing with the outside, in this case, because of the permit, the outside time limit of October 27th.
Right.
He can do it much sooner, he will, depending on kind of the...
And I would say those, if I may, those dates were really just placeholders. I think that, I think we need to have a good conversation between Chuck and his needs, and Greg and CST and their needs to make sure that both the logistics up and down Atwater Ave, and on the construction site, as well as, you know, things like the timing of our CFO and the work on the road, that they're all, that they're all coordinated. So I would consider these placeholders for now.
Right, and I think that some of them don't necessarily, in the special permit, need the date. They can be worked out between you guys and Chuck, or if you want to have a side letter with him.
We just, I think we just need some assurance that they are gonna, some of them are gonna be done by a certain date because, you know, for instance, the certificate, the ENF certificate says, before we occupy a building, we need to build a bike lane.
Right, so that's why I left that one in there. I didn't strike that one. So the third one is to structurally reinforce the Atwater culvert or take other measures which would reasonably extend the anticipated life of the culvert. And I struck the proposed 30 to 40 years because a little unclear how, how long something is gonna last, and I guarantee it's sort of an intent, right? So the issue there is that there is a culvert under Atwater Ave. It has been tested, and I think, is that what you sent me by email?
I sent you this report.
Okay, so I will put that in everybody's packet. It's a, it's a report of the structural condition of the...
Right, that copy, a couple copies have all the exhibits. The smaller copies, if people want them, essentially have the summary, which I think is the significant part of this, and Sam, you might want to...
Is this the same one, Mark, that you sent out?
I may have put that in folders.
I've seen it, I've actually read it, I think.
Yeah, because we received that, actually, a little over a week ago, I think.
That's it then.
There's actually, if I might, two reports. One is the Mass DOT inspection report, and then the second one is EEC's independent review of the same structure.
Right. So as, I haven't read the reports, but it's my understanding that they have assessed the condition and also a weight limit, or how, what that culvert is good for, so to speak. And I don't know, I, so that's why, if you look at page two of the handout I just gave you, I said applicant shall limit the weight of the vehicles to whatever that weight is that's in the report.
And in the copy I sent you later this afternoon, I modified that sentence a little bit.
Okay.
Because obviously, we don't want to be responsible for the weight of other people's vehicles.
But I think we'll post the culvert, too. That's the town's job. So those are the three issues that is a package the town would assume the responsibility for in consideration of a payment to be recommended by our town staff of Mark, Chuck, and Greg. And it's, you know, a substantial payment, I think, is contemplated. It's one that is based in the, a dollar value of those items. And then I guess the last piece is this, I, there was a proposal out there on the draft that you saw in your packet to install water sewer lines from the utility sleeve on 128 to the Loop Road. So the Loop Road is where you're gonna connect the building to the utilities. And Mark and I thought that it made sense to remove that from the special permit and from this agreement, because there's already work with the DPW and self signaling for the delivery of utilities, of water and sewer utilities. And so it's kind of not our, not our hunt.
So this is the extension of Mill Street that goes down?
From 120, no, well, yeah, that is what's already being worked on, and then...
So it's just continuing under 128.
Just keeping it, but why would we separate out a chunk of that work? But basically, the town delivers the utilities under the Mass Works grant and whatever other agreements the water and sewer team, DPW, has agreed to that point of connection. And this is like not our, not our...
Can you tell us exactly where that point of connection is?
Okay, yeah. So here's, it's a water connection is coming up, and it's right here where it connects to the Loop Road.
So that's what the Mass Works grant is bringing it to here?
I don't know what, how much of the Mass Works grant is...
But this is the connection point.
The Mass Works grant is bringing it to the other side of 128.
Which is right over here, so...
So kind of where the compost site is?
No, no. Our side, the north side of 128, poking through the culvert and stopping there.
It's, it's behind the Mac swimming pool, essentially.
Yeah.
So water and sewer is coming to...
Let's not all talk at once.
A point just behind the Mac swimming pool. From there, what we're talking about is the line from where it ends in the Mass Works to join to the self signaling road, so that there's a continuity of water through that road.
Okay, but the Mass Works grant wouldn't bring it to a, to a private property. They would still, they would leave it on town property.
No, the town is gonna have an easement over it.
So Peter, you said this is the location that comes under 128? And this is to go, the connection to the Loop Road?
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna pay the town to extend it on the private property.
Okay, so the Mass Works grant gets it to where?
Gets it to where the red line starts, right here. So this is the north side of 128, right here.
Okay.
And it continues up the hill behind, Greg was talking about the swimming pool. It goes up the hill to here. This is where it would stop for our purposes. Town would like to continue it down.
And so one of the...
So you're, the 3.5 million is getting it to here? And then you guys are...
We're gonna pay for that.
Okay.
And so the reason I, we thought it made sense to take it out of the special permit is because it's a sort of a separate project. But to Mark Globski's point, the special permit does, how, say that the self signaling will grant an utility easement to the town for that work. But the town has a, because the town owns the pipe.
Town owns the pipe.
Yeah, but, but my understanding, so even like if, so for Mill Street residents, say, because now that pipe will go for Mill Street, if they want to connect to their house, they pay from the street to their house, so just like you guys would pay from here to there.
We are.
Correct, right.
So I don't know why we would...
It's not even a special per... So there's two pieces. One is, it's not a special permit. Who pays for it is, as a utility, is not really a piece of the special permit. What is, is, we have put in the special permit, is an easement for the town because it's, the town is going to own and maintain that line. And the reason the town is gonna own and maintain that line, I think, is if people at Beaver Dam or elsewhere want to, or the town wants to... So because the town wants to connect to it, it's a town, becomes a town.
If it ever gets extended.
They need to extend it to the compost site.
Public works.
Or to some other place. It becomes a public work.
So if it goes to the public worksite, the compost site, is it gonna go down the middle of Atwater Avenue's?
And under the culvert.
And under the culvert.
And thus, the town will be digging up the road. So we couldn't, that's why we don't want to have, ask self signaling to repave the road because, right, I mean, repave it on Monday, and Chuck will dig it up on Tuesday.
So the water and sewer doesn't come over the, or into the bridge along School Street?
No.
It's going under 128 and into private property?
Right.
Right there?
But all of these things are really not our hunt.
Right, no, yeah, right, exactly.
Okay, so first, I would like to kind of get a sense of whether the approach, well, why don't we take them, the three pedestrian questions and comments on the three items? We'll start with the pedestrian improvements, because I know that's been something that we've tossed around. So we have a...
Yeah, can I, I have a question about that.
Yeah, of course.
So, and I, the last I recall about that conversation about the sidewalk was that it was not achievable, but now it is. And I think some of the concerns that were voiced in that conversation were because of the proximity to the wetlands and the width of the road not being able to be sufficient if you did put a walkway in there. So what happened?
So I think, just can I just interrupt?
Yeah.
And I think we left the last meeting, and Laura said it needs to be drawn. We need to kind of get out there and draw, so they did. Conceptually, it's not a 100% design, and found that, and then I think there was a sidewalk. I was, nobody was, Chuck and Mark and Brian were there, I think, no, that, with Concom, right?
Yes.
So...
So, yeah, so I went out there with Concom, and they felt as long as we didn't go backfilling and to, to get more width down into the wetlands, they felt it was a permissible project because there is a shoulder there beyond the pavement. And there is some area even in some locations where you could extend it a little bit. So they felt that it was a permissible project now that they've actually surveyed it. Clearly, there is enough width through there on the other edge where the culvert is, not culvert, uh, swell is, which needs to get reconstructed anyways. If you need to adjust the width and get a little more pavement, you could, you could do that. So although it's not, quote, designed right now, it's a concept plan, the concept plan would be designable and builtable, so...
And the sidewalk is gonna be at the same elevation as the surface of the road?
It'll be at grade.
At grade, but separated.
Just separated by this wooden fence, which would be...
Yeah, as a pedestrian safety measure, it will.
Yeah, I've seen that in where there's a wooden guardrail separating.
It allows you to put the, in some places, put the, it closer to the road without a... We had, there was also a discussion about a three-foot grass buffer, but then you're, you got seven feet of width.
I think it's a great compromise.
Yeah, it is. But, and then, so the road itself, what happens, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't remember this, but the bike distinction, is that, is it gonna be clear that bikes will not be on that sidewalk and on the road, or how is that gonna work?
Well, I think that will depend on the final design, whether it can be used as a multi-use. Because, I mean, it will have use, certainly more use than, there are a handful of joggers that run out of the Mac, so it will be more use once this is developed. Will it be sufficient width-wise and to be a multi-use? I mean, that's something that I guess Chuck can determine. And there'll be sufficient width on the road, and there'll be traffic, traffic calming, so the cars will be going slower, so bikes can ride. Not everyone, you know, many people still want to ride in the street, so...
Peter, we are still proposing the bike sheroes kind of in the roadway. Would you ever traffic engineer if there's, you know, specific questions that relate to that subset?
But again, the pedestrian, and maybe I should say, and cycling improvements in the language would be the responsibility of the town now. So the town would do that, because they're gonna be the ones, we, the town, Chuck is going to be the one to maintain it today and tomorrow and the day after tomorrow.
So essentially, CST is not gonna touch Atwater Avenue.
Right.
You're not gonna do anything to it. Just gonna pay some money, and the town's gonna pay for it.
So how does the, how does like plowing work with the wood fence buffer?
Chuck, do you have, Chuck Dam, are you still on? Oh, I think he was on.
Yeah, I'm here, dear.
Yep, how about plowing?
Yeah, so we won't interfere with plowing operations in the right of way. You know, right now, we only sidewalk plow, that's the question, the, you know, kind of general core downtown area, and it's after kind of the storm, you know, response is over. So, you know, if we, if we have a row, if our equipment can fit down the sidewalk, we'll plow that as well. It's gonna come down to, you know, how much room do we have if our equipment will fit, you know, in between the guardrails and whatnot. But we'll, we'll still plow it, it shouldn't impact anything.
So, so if we have a heavy snow winter, it'll probably not be usable, correct?
The walkway?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the sidewalk will, you know, be the last thing that we get to clear, but we'll still attempt to.
And then with a wood fence railing? I think of wood, I think of maintenance every few years. What, how have you factored that into the cost?
Um, no, I don't think that's a real concern. We, you know, if you go to Chabaco in Hamilton, and they just put, you know, several linear feet of wood guardrail. We're not talking like a fence like around, you know, your property, or like a picket fence or anything. Like, this is a legit wood guardrail that's, you know, DOT spec for, you know, six by six and six by eight construction. So it's, it's pretty heavy-duty, but it's not, so I don't, I don't foresee it being a maintenance issue. I don't know, I guess, but that should be fine.
Laura? Do we know what the proposed conceptual design width of the pedestrian path is? Thank you, Mark?
Four feet.
Four feet, over the entire lane? And Mark, you made a comment about the swell needs to be constructed or reconstructed. Is that with the, when the town makes the improvements, it reconserves the swell?
Yes, that's all factored in.
As part of the stormwater management?
Yeah.
So four feet is not wide enough for a multi-use path, at least not in a formal way, but I think it is a good compromise, given the spatial constraints and the kind of rural nature of the road.
I think it's a great, great solution.
Okay. We will take some public comment, but I want to hear from the board and sort of get through all these issues. So these giant questions down or comments, and we'll be sure to get to you if you have some. The next one is the bike lane, basically the town taking the responsibility for the bike lane in this, from the 128 to Atwater. And Chuck, do you want to say anything about why you thought that was a good idea?
Right, so, you know, the, like I said, we have a, you know, on-call contract to add these unit price items. Uh, so that's what, you know, basis of my kind of thought process that we could take on this work. There's no, uh, existing utilities or drainage there, however, we are, um, you know, planning to do quite a bit of work at the old compo site, one way or another. And so I, I'd like to add a little bit more control on, you know, when and how that gets implemented. Uh, you know, especially if we're putting a, you know, five-foot bike lane on both sides of the road, you know, if there's going to be truck traffic in and out, stuff like that. So I think ultimately the final decision should be, you know, made by the town, you know, in concert with all these other projects. Uh, there's also been some talk about extending north of that water. So I think, um, you know, that would give us the ability to, you know, have that continuity, not have, you know, different, um, you know, different bike accommodations on different parts of the road. So it's more a factor of, you know, having just one party responsible. And, um, I think I'm comfortable that we can make that happen.
Okay. Um, and there is the, the only, that is the one issue that, that needs to be, uh, that is a CST compliance with DOT. So that, that, um, date needs to be, uh, maybe it should be pinned to your substantial completion date or something like that. Rather than, you know, October 27th, uh, um, on or before October 27th, or substantial completion, whichever's first or something like that.
So where does the sidewalk end from the highway layout?
For me?
Do we have a sidewalk going to, all the way to Atwater?
There is no sidewalk.
So.
No, there's no existing sidewalk and the comment from DOT was for bike lanes, so that's what we're contemplating at this point.
Because I know the town has, um, on and off talked about doing a sidewalk. So I'm just curious, um, why a bike lane before a sidewalk?
He's hiding behind that. Thank you.
I apologize, I don't know, it's a bad issue, so why, we're going back and forth between the wall and here. Um, so, I know we call teams before, but just for the general public, Sam Gregorio, senior traffic engineer at TEC, uh, the traffic engineers for the project. Uh, the discussion with, uh, Matthew Key, uh, Andrew Armita process, one of the determinations that we made is that for, as a CST of a site, there's no practical walkability. For where we are on a site where you'd have to walk all the way down Atwater through public right of way. Because the, the tough path in the middle through, uh, K class is actually not public on the road, so we can't force our people to walk through there. So they would have to walk all the way to Atwater and then walk down school to the nearest object. Of consequence for that is the house on the other side of the ramp from there. So we're talking now well over a mile of actual travel for someone, and that's assuming that our, our employee is living at those locations. So to us, the more practical thing that we could do is provide bike accommodations that would stretch from Master D up to Atwater at that point. Uh, where we think that we would actually draw, actually, actually for bicycle travel as opposed to one to our site. That doesn't negate anything that happens from other locations to Ozzy, the roadway, the MAC, or others that might come in the future, but as a CST improvement. But what we're, we're providing, it didn't really make sense because we don't believe that anybody's walking through our site. Uh, so that was the idea behind that. Whereas a bike lane is something that we could physically see people doing that to our site. We'll get to Atwater now, because the question came in about the width, which is why it doesn't necessarily contain that Atwater from there. Uh, but that's what we'll look at.
Thank you. Because I, and then I just wanted to check with Chuck, if he's still there. Does putting a bike lane in mean we couldn't have a future sidewalk along that part of, um. I guess the state highway to Atwater?
Right, so what we're talking about here for the bike lane is just in town right of way. The state already did their bike accommodations on their, on the interchange. So this is connecting that and they have no sidewalk on, you know, over that interchange. They do have it across the, you know, 128 overpass, but it kind of just ends there.
Right.
Uh, but to answer your question, I don't, I don't think it would recoup us from going further. I think, you know, ultimately, um, you know, by, I envision us having two bike lanes, uh, about five foot with no buffer. And so, you know, if there was a idea in the theater, uh, add a five-foot sidewalk on one side or the other. I think we would, we would be able to, you know, probably fit it in, but again, that hasn't really been discussed, so I'm not.
Well, I, I just want to make sure we're not prohibiting that in the future.
So the bike lane was required by the DOT, so, um, just to get, okay.
I mean, I think we have the right of way. It's just a matter of, you know, there's utility poles, stuff like that, so it becomes a, you know, you just run out of space in some way.
Bike lane question. Uh, so on the south, the opposite side of, um, School Street, heading into town, there is an existing bike lane. That gets to the DOT highway, but it has been blocked by Jersey barriers for better part of a year now. Is that required to be open and operational at the end of this?
Right, so that one is, you know, somebody actually hit the overpass when driving on 128. And so that's a structural issue that DOT is addressing.
Okay.
Uh, I haven't, I've been in talks with them about that, but they haven't given me a timeline of when. And also the Jersey barriers are mostly just to keep car, you know, the car load going over the overpass.
I see.
From using the bike lane, uh, you know, it's kind of a worst case scenario, but they had to do it to, you know, ensure that they weren't overloading the now kind of debilitated bridge.
Okay, thanks, Chuck.
No worries. I'm now going to walk. Okay, um, and the last one is to, uh, maybe Chuck, since you're unmuted. Uh, can you talk about the, uh, re, how one structurally reinforces a culvert? At least in your, at what we even know today?
Right, so, you know, we've talked about this, myself and the CST folks, you know, quite a bit. And, you know, there was several iterations where we were looking at, uh, you know, needing to put utilities under and over the culvert as well as, uh, you know, potential, you know, bridges, utility bridges across it. So like all of that's kind of in the rearview mirror now. But during that process, we realized that, you know, there, there is a somewhat, uh, you know, we're keeping an eye on that culvert. It's just a corrugated metal culvert. Uh, TEC and CST has, you know, done the evaluation. And, uh, we also had a, you know, independent evaluation from DOT where they rated, you know, the structure. And, you know, we have, uh, now a couple, uh, reports on that. And so, um, you know, while we don't think it's an immediate need to structurally reinforce it, the clock is ticking, so to speak. And, you know, it could be a couple of years from now, it could be, you know, 10 years from now. But ultimately, as it's a town-owned road, you know, the town will be responsible, you know, just like we are for Central Street, you know, culvert. And so this, I think, is a kind of compromise here where we're not making CST, you know, we're requiring them to do a structural reinforcement now as part of their project. However, you know, I think this is a, uh, token amount to go towards that rehabilitation when it needs to, needs to happen. And, you know, maybe the, you know, maybe it covers more or less depending on when we go to make the improvement, what the solution is. Uh, there's kind of a wide range of solutions at this point. Uh, but when the time comes, you know, we'll have to, you know, either use the money that's set aside now or, you know, a future town appropriation to, uh, make sure that, uh, the culvert stays in working order. Because that's to the benefit of the CST and their site, but also, you know, the MAC and the Beaver Dam Road and all that as well, so. Uh, but we, we think we can do it without replacing. It's just more of like a structural reinforcement like it says.
Okay, and then the, um, the last piece of number 13 that's important is that I did talk to Sarah Melish and said if the, if we receive a payment, um, through this process. Is there a mechanism in town finance to put it in a dedicated account so then it can be used for these specific purposes? And the answer is yes. So, um, I'm not sure we need to get into what that is or how that is, because I can't answer that. But the answer was yes, and, um, she was comfortable with that. And I asked Dan Harrison the same question, same former, uh, chair of the finance committee, and she agreed, by the way, yes.
So. I also cleared it with Andrea. She, she did agree, and she was just going to look to see if there was any upper limit, but she couldn't think of one offhand.
Okay, so I think we can do it proceed.
So the planning board's done it before.
For me?
The planning board's done this process before.
Right, right. Okay, um.
Sarah, may I ask just one question?
Yeah, of course.
This is one question that I asked earlier, but it might be clarity for all. So Chuck, will, will, will it be any damage to the newly reconstructed Atwater Avenue paved surface by reinforcing the struc, the conduit at all?
Right, so I, I think there's a couple of different methods for non-destructive roadway work. Uh, it would also, you know, maintain traffic, so really all the work, it's a 14-foot diameter culvert, so there's plenty of room to work inside of it. Uh, so that would be the intent, would be to reinforce it from the inside and not impact traffic or, uh, you know, the roadway.
Okay, so we can pave the road and feel comfortable that we wouldn't have to rip it up to, to do this work?
Right, yeah, for sure.
Um, question on the culvert. Is the, uh, loading of the construction traffic factored in? There is the operational servicing of the building, but then the construction traffic, which is frequent and heavy, may have an impact on the culvert as well. So does the structural reinforcement, um, factor in?
So, so TEC evaluated it without the reinforcement and they think that they will be able to, you know, get all their deliveries and all their construction equipment without impacting, uh, the existing condition. Uh, so this is really just kind of a belt suspenders, future roofing, the culvert. Because, you know, like you said, we want to get a 30- or 40-year solution, not a, you know, not have it be a full replacement in five to 10 years or something like that. So, um, that's why I think we, we will do monitoring and, you know, perhaps it's something you guys would, uh, consider in errors. But also the weight restriction based on the load so that we know, uh, we're not doing any structural damage or continued structural damage.
So just in to those two points that Chuck just raised, the proposed conditions 16 and 17, and Mark Golovski gave me, he's just, just handed us some new. But that the applicant limit the weight of vehicles traveling over Atwater to be used by its contractors for the development and, uh, and deliveries, I think, should be to less than 60 per us times. And I think that's based on the report. I haven't, we need to check all those things. And then, um, the applicant, uh, has received a, the TEC report, which we'll put in your packet. About bridge rating at Atwater Culvert dated October 30th, 2024. It's, um, and it's determined that the carrying capacity and condition of Atwater culvert. In addition, uh, Mass DOT has biannual inspections of the culvert, um, and the town. So then we're going to, uh, please propose language around, um, inspections between the D, the DPW and the applicant. So we need to sort of, I haven't looked, read this language yet, but, um, Mark will review that and then create a final, a final. Mark, Mark and Mark will figure out a final language for, for a regular, the point is to have it looked at with, on a regular basis. So that if it's going to fall in, we know, um, in advance.
Do we, do we look at it annually now?
For me?
Uh, Chuck, how often do we look at the culvert now?
So it's biannally right now, like they said, it was, you know, DOT will do a, uh, inspection. And so that's, you know, typically every two years.
It might be worth pointing out that TEC did evaluate the structural integrity of that culvert. And there are no limitations in terms of what can go over it at this time. Anything that can go on any other roads can go over this, and there's no, there's no limitations or anything. It's in, it's in that, it's in that sound condition.
And that's considering construction vehicles too?
It, it is, so it's, the, the weight of the construction vehicles are all going to be less than any maximum weights that, you know, would be allowed.
Um, any other comments on those three elements, four elements? And then, um, comments, uh, from the four questions about the general approach for, uh, number 13? You have, can I gather it from, you know, comments that we have a consensus that this remains a way to move forward?
Go ahead. On, on number 13, I totally see the logic of it, and I think that A and B, bike and pen, um, construction can be estimated in a pretty reasonable fashion. But as Chuck spoke to the culvert, that's got a wide bandwidth of, um, what it might be and the cost and the unforeseen conditions of putting in a new culvert. So are we trying to, is the goal here to get the funds to cover this work? Or is it a contribution towards some future rebuilding of the culvert?
So I, I think we're asking our staff, our Greg and, and Chuck and Mark to come up with a number.
Yeah.
Um, that they recommend to us, and I, I personally think we should take their, whatever their number. But I think that on the culvert, as Chuck sort of said, um, it's to ask for a contribution toward the, um, the solution. Whether the solution is, you know, um, carbon fiber on the inside of the culvert, uh, which is the, the, the low end of the, you know, the cost to total replacement. But the, recognizing that the culvert is not, it's a town road.
Yeah.
And that it's wear and tear will be increased on it arguably from the cell signaling activities, but it also serves a number of other, um, property owners. So it's a contrib, it's, it's, uh, so to your point, the question is not how do we fully replace the culvert at the gold slated standard? And what's that dollar amount? But a contribution towards, um, the, uh, a, a future. Either, uh, shoring up or, uh, or, um, replacement, depending on the needs.
Can I, can I just ask, sorry, I asked such a question to Chuck. Chuck, was that, was, was this focus on the culvert, um, in existence before this project? About, I mean, was it part of the long-term, um, needs for attention for public works?
Uh, so, yeah, so we, we, like I said, DOT had been doing the biannual, uh, inspections, and so we had that. So they did give it, I, I forget the normally place, but, you know, something like fair or, you know, fair report. Um, there, there is some degradation of the, uh, galvanized, uh, steel, you know, at the water line. So that's kind of what we have our eye on, but it wasn't on our, it certainly wasn't on our short-term list of culverts that need replacement. And I would say, you know, depending on how we see that, you know, that debilitation progress over the next couple inspections would have dictated how quickly it moved up or down the list.
Fair.
Thank you.
Chris, you had another comment?
Uh, so I wonder if this is a condition that holds as a special permit? Because a special permit is requiring things of CST and we're requiring things of ourselves. And I, I don't, not.
Well, I think the point is they want to know what they're getting for the, what, what the, um, what the town's going to be.
So I assume there'd be an agreement between CST and the town as part of the deposit.
Well, I think it's part of the, because the special permit is going to ask for a sum. The, um, the, the intention is, what would be spelled?
I can see us referencing the agreement certain way, but it really.
I think we can do it either way, and I, and Mark and I did talk about whatever, you know, conditions we come up with, we should run them by town council. So they may have a better way to do it, but.
Yeah, okay.
I think, uh, how. Right. Administratively, how it happens is kind of, we're trying to get to the, the idea.
I think the idea is great. We want to make sure that the board as a whole is on board with this concept before we hammer out any.
Right, before we finalize.
Any details, bring you actual numbers. I mean, Chuck has put together some numbers, but they're still a little bit in, you know, being tweaked, et cetera. So, um, but, so we didn't want to go any further until such time as.
When the hearing needed to keep moving, so.
Do you have some examples from either prior board, Manchester Board decisions or other towns or decisions that have used this type of chart and, and fund request?
Well, Chuck, you said that the planning board had exactly this kind of thing for, uh, another project.
Right, so Plum Hill, uh, they did a payment to the town for final paving of the road. And so that was, you know, roughly $50,000. And so that's, that's what we're basing the idea of, you know, having a separate account that's not subject to, you know, future appropriations. It's just, that's the account that we draw down to do the work as laid out in the special permit. And so that, that's what we were referencing there. Uh, I mean, in my prior experience, it was pretty typical, actually, that the developer just writes a check so that, you know, the town or city or whatever can, uh, make whatever needed improvements on, you know, their infrastructure, whether it's roads or utilities or whatever. infrastructure, whether it's roads or utilities or whatever, but, um.
All right, um, so let's keep moving, uh, oh, sorry, so.
It's okay. Um, I guess I'm just wondering, um, and I guess it's part of Chris's point. Um, the sum, I mean, the planning board shouldn't be involved in setting some, we have no expertise in.
That's where we're gonna get a cost from, uh, from Greg, through, through Greg, from his, his team.
But we have to put our trust in them, that whatever sum they come up with is appropriate. Um, so I'm just wondering, do we need to put the actual sum in our, um?
I think we do, yes. Because we're the ones who control the, you know, the permit. If they wanna give us a dollar less on that, we can withhold the permit.
So we can't say like a sum to be determined by?
By somebody else, no, okay, all right. Um, okay, so let's, um, uh, just, what I'm gonna do is just walk through, we have seventeen conditions, I think, um, we've talked about number thirteen. I'm gonna just summarize them, and if anybody has, I'm gonna do like town meeting if you have a hold, if you wanna, if you wanna talk about them, um, cause I think a lot of them have been done and we have talked about them in the past. Um, the first just says that the, um, that we're gonna get as-built drawings. Um, the second says, um, that, uh, the applicant is gonna pay the cost of the inspection of the stormwater management by an independent third party.
No, we're not talking about the general site, not.
No, we're just talking about the stormwater and the slopes.
No, I understand, but this is not about Atwater Ave.
No, 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 we're talking about the conditions for, this is on their site.
Excuse me, Sarah, do you wanna put?
Oh, yeah, thanks, um, actually, scroll, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I have questions on that one.
What are yours?
Hold, please, hold, please.
Okay. Um, the hours of construction from, um, is number three?
Hold, please.
Uh, uh, requirements in the, um, actually, that now this is, um, being usurped by the town, right? The applicant should comply with acquires in strategic of Secretary of Energy.
Well, there, there are some other requirements.
There are some other requirements there?
I just, I couldn't find exhibit A or B.
Subfolder.
It was a subfolder, but I, I couldn't find it.
They were in the original.
In the original application.
You're missing an eye, excuse me.
So this is the traffic studies and reports required by DOT, shall be simultaneously asleep. So this is simply, this is really simply asking that the, whatever the DOT needs, we also get a copy. That's all that's, that one is saying. That, um, it's simply saying, you've got requirements to DOT. When, when you submit those, we need to see a copy, pretty easy, I think. Uh, display of sustainable features will be, um, at the trailhead of the trustees and on the CST website. Um, number six is permission granted to the trustees, um, providing pedestrian and vehicular access and egress to the monoliths. Um, and hopefully we're gonna have, uh, town council looking at all of this. Um, seven, during construction, Atwater Ave is kept free of mud, dirt, and debris from the construction. Um, eight, um, the best management practices will be, um, and, and as outlined in the order of conditions, um, will be, uh, all, and the stormwater work will be done prior to the occupancy permit. So just basically, it's not a requirement, it's just a timing of when that stormwater, uh, system needs to be constructed.
Uh, I have hold on that, just a quick question.
Okay, um, applicant shall maintain the stormwater system, um, according to the operation and maintenance plan, which was, um, in their application. I believe it was reviewed by Weston Sampson. Um, ten is the applicant should provide a performance guarantee of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to secure stabilization of the site and prevent off-site damage in the event the applicant, um, you know, fails to complete it, um, it will be a letter of credit and will be released upon the issuance of the occupancy permit, which, according to number nine, stormwater will be complete before that, um, or an action by the planning board, whichever occurs first, and that idea here is if in the spring of this year, they complete the stormwater and Weston Sampson, um, reviews it, my guess is that we would release a portion of the, um, most of the letter of credit. We might retain a small amount for damage that happened during the remainder of the construction, depending on the situation. That's, that's often what happens. Um, so the, uh, the important thing there is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to secure stabilization of the site in the event that the applicant, um, does not complete. Um, special permit is good for, uh, twenty-four months. Um, eleven, twelve, the applicant should cooperate with the police chief and the fire chief to prepare a plan to train the public service profess- uh, folks. Uh, we just talked about thirteen. Um, fourteen is the perpetual easement to the town to, for utility, water and sewer utilities. Uh, fifteen is throughout the construction process, um, the applicant shall regularly, at least monthly, submit an overview of significant construction activities um, to public, uh, safety, DPW, town administrator, um, and maintain a website which will be, contain construction progress updates and other information which may be useful to the community. It, the website will include a contact information for a designated representative.
Hold, please.
Okay. Um, and the applicant shall limit the weight of the vehicles and will ask Chuck to review that, uh, language that Mark Glavsky has proposed gross, six, uh, less than sixty gross tons. Um, so that's, I think we just asked Chuck to review. And then a process for, uh, regular inspections of the culvert. Mark Glavsky's proposed some language, which I have Manchester review. So, um, conceptually, that we would have the app, the, um, culvert inspected regularly, or it's annually or biannually or for whatever. Um, and, uh, I think the final sentence that Mark Glavsky proposed is important. The applicant should coordinate with the town's DPW to complete at applicant's expense, um, any necessary remedial actions, so. If, uh, if such report indicates material extraordinary deterioration, the applicant should coordinate with DPW to complete at the applicant's expense any reasonable, necessary remedial actions. So, um, we'll look at that language, but thank you for suggesting some. Um, okay, so that's a few things to talk about.
Before driving back in, I had a question, so when we last discussed the, um, conditions, we were to submit additional ones to Mark and he was gonna.
Okay, what are the additional ones that you wanted to?
So I submitted a list and it doesn't look like any of them made it, so.
Okay, why don't you?
I'm gonna go over those.
Okay, do you wanna just put them on the list right now?
Um, well, and, and these are vague because they needed some more language around them, but, um, it, one of them was, and a lot of these were taken from other projects that had been done in town. Um, so this was addressing inspections, third-party oversight, and how the issues were resolved. One was site plan, um, site security plan. One of the ones that I have on hold is stormwater management, which encompasses removing eighty percent of the TSS, which I just need to see if it's addressed in here. The recharge systems, um, yearly inspections and maintenance and who inspects. The geothermal yearly inspections, um, putting in provisions of no use of salt, et cetera, for snow removal on site. Detail plan submitted to the fire chief for approval, explosive use, time and day used, individuals responsible, I think we've got that covered. Um, the mass DOT blast approval document. I, since I don't know what phase two entails with blasting, this is adding, um, the seismographs and monitors for off-site. The priority use of any explosives, app, applicant shall post with the fire chief a statutory bond um, in compliance with state law. I don't know if that happened this time. Applicant agrees to notify butters five hundred feet and any residents requesting. And that's the pre-blast surveys, um, the emergency access plan during construction, a comprehensive project schedule, will be submitted to the planning board and posted online. And no explosive fuels, petrochemical products, highly flammable or toxic materials will be stored on the site during or after construction.
Okay. Um, can we maybe figure out if there's consensus that we should address any of these? So I'm gonna take them one at a time, um, and, and incorporate them, maybe not in their details, but I think some of them are already in, in here, so there's, the first one was inspections. Um, uh, we, so we have a process to inspect the, uh, um, the stormwater and the site, which is in. Uh, first of all, it's, it's, um, in the order of conditions, which would be CONCOM, and there is an O and, number nine is an O and M plan. Um, and, uh, there are also requirements in the general bylaw for maintenance of stormwater. Remember, we moved it there so that it applied across to, uh, stormwater regardless of, um, special permits. And so what other inspections are you thinking?
Well, any third, um, any third-party inspections that are done on site. So I, I'm assuming it's more than stormwater, I'm assuming it would be, um, electrical and.
Definitely, yes.
So, I'm again.
Is that what number one is?
I think we, um, the, the building inspect, the building permit fee would cover inspections. That's the purpose, I think, of the building, uh, permit fee, which is significant, right?
Even, even outside, even outside of that, there's really, the, the fee is, so, it's, we're, we're obligated to provide, all of our engineers are provided to certify that, that building is being built according to the building code. And the building inspector is welcome and will come do his own inspections, but the controlled construction process in some ways, you know, sort of, that trumps.
Well, and also the control construction requires certain third-party independent inspection.
Right, for, yeah.
But, but those fall under the building commissioners, so generally, that condition that you pulled from another permit probably had more to do with site inspections outside of the envelope of what, uh, falls under the authority of the building. Inspector, I don't remember how many feet it is, but there's a certain, depending on the utility. So generally, it's, it's for the, uh, that condition is for the site work.
And who does that?
Yes, and some, some towns have very strict controls over site work and some towns are totally hands-off. So we kind of have hit like a middle of the road, I'm sure.
Were you thinking about electrical inspection reports and?
Well, these are, a lot of these come from when, when we did the high school build. So, um, I think it was, you know, it was, there was a lot of oversight on that, which I think was important. And I'm, you know, open to discussing it, but kind of, I'm trying to understand that we should all understand why we wouldn't be doing it for this as well, is my point.
Do you have any clarity of Stahel's reports from the third-party inspectors are distributed to the town?
They are distributed to the building department and to, uh, the engineer's record.
And if there's a failure or doesn't meet spec, is if the inspector finds out, how is, what is the action after that?
Well, the action actually falls with the engineer of record to reject or submit a remedial action. So let's say you're doing a steel inspection and there is a weld that, you know, needs to be rewelded. This, the structural engineer would direct, uh, the third-party to read spec after this was done. So that, that's pretty well in the course. I think where we're talking here, and we had this discussion with Chuck, was the drainage and site utilities, he would be on a regular basis just coming by and not truly doing inspection, but witnessing the, the install along with the Hancock engineer.
And then, uh, Mary, to your point about stormwater, the, um, I think we don't wanna put another eighty percent TSS. We wanna rely on the stormwater bylaw, which is getting, uh, revamped at town meeting. Um, and, um, not put a second requirement besides what the state and the CONCOM and the bylaw have. We don't wanna add a, I, it's my opinion that we wouldn't want to add a, um, another.
Another requirement on top of what's already been complied with, and it's probably what was designed for, it was probably eighty percent. I'm not entirely sure, but generally, that's kind of the standard that gets designed for, it could be higher. So if it was higher, you don't wanna say you have to.
But I guess my point is the per, the special, that what we're talking about is conditions in the special permit.
Right.
And so the special permit, that, we already have stormwater reviewed, and we have Weston Sampson looking at the stormwater, and we have, um, and the recharge. Um, and the stormwater bylaw addresses that in five years, if there's a violation, there is a provision in the stormwater bylaw. And this permit would be, I mean, so I think unless there's a specific issue with this site.
So I think, um, just to close out the first one, maybe we, um, we, if the building inspector is for, for the, is getting all the reports and everything else for the building and DPW is doing everything um, for drainage and site, that we put in the condition that, or somewhere, that it is very clear that the built, that these are the two departments having oversight and doing, um, is, you know, resolving any issues on site. Um, I think sometimes we lack clarity on what the, you know, maybe not with the big projects, but, um, what the building inspector is responsible for and what DPW is responsible for.
Well, the building inspector's responsibility are statutory, I mean, they're, they're spelled out by the building code. And, and, um, so I.
Yeah, this is site plan review, not.
So I think that the building is taken up, is, it is, you know, the build, they, mass building code and energy code are the, you're using stretch code, right, cause we're a stretch code community. Um, are, that's the domain of that and to, so this is not a document to guide the public through the permitting and the inspection process. This is a guy, a, a document between the town and cell signaling. So perhaps we need to have a public document that tells the responsibilities of various groups, but I'm not sure that this is the place to do that.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, and then geothermal, um, annual.
What about site security plan?
Okay, I was just trying to put the inspections together, sorry. Can we cut, can we just go to the geothermal annual inspection to?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's in our, um, I think that's in our bylaws, um, with, is with the recharge, and I don't think we've ever had super clarity on who's doing those inspections.
Okay, but geothermal isn't a recharge, it's a closed-loop system.
No, I know, I said like the recharge that we have.
Isn't that a stormwater issue?
The recharge is for stormwater. But they're supposed to have yearly inspections, and we don't currently do it when we require it as a planning board. Um, we require people to put in recharge systems and then there's no.
Is there a recharge system in this?
No, uh, well, we did go to the board of health, and they said that, uh, because these are closed-loop geothermal systems. geothermal systems, there's no border health oversight.
They don't have any inspections?
No.
So why not? But you're talking about a recharge system that is different. And so we don't have a detention, a tank in this project. We have a...
You're talking for geothermal inspections, correct?
Well, this, yes, I said geothermal and I just threw in like the recharge that we fire for stormwater. I didn't list that.
Oh, you said like, okay. But geothermal, it's a closed-loop system. It's just, it's exchanging...
So I didn't know you had gone to the Board and had a...
Oh, yeah.
Okay, all right, so back to site security plan. Is that our domain?
It used to be, I guess, on other permits. So, I mean, we can decide that it's not, but I don't know that we have any clear rules around it. I mean, I think it's, you know, if we're doing site plan for movement around the site, I think it is a little bit, but...
I would think that the applicant is most interested in their own security and that our oversight of the site cell signaling security is not...
I can probably speak to site security. Well, there's two different levels of site security. If you're referring to the building once it's operational or during construction.
During construction.
During construction, just a perimeter fence, lock, gate, and Knox box for the fire department. Pretty soon.
Well, number 12...
That's actually on the submitted plan, shows the perimeter fencing on the...
Okay.
And number 12 speaks to security issues.
That's once the building is built.
Yeah.
So one thing, maybe this is a little simplistic, but for the high school, the town was sort of the beneficiary of the project. This is a private entity, technically, that's that. And that's a little bit of a difference between trying to compare the agreement regarding construction of the high school and this. Or maybe it was the state, I don't remember, but this is a private entity. So some of the things like site security, to me, seems most beneficial, not so much to the town, but to the person constructing the facility. And I think maybe some of the things you mentioned fall into that same category.
It could be. I mean, I think our site plan and our special permit, whether it's private or public, are kind of the same. But, I mean, I didn't want to have to go through this excruciating. I thought we had a process in place. It just didn't happen, so we're left discussing it at the meeting.
Well, I think Mark received them and made a professional judgment to not include them, which he probably should have. So let's make sure that we go through them. The other one is no salt. And Chuck, what are the rules? Isn't the, there are certain no-salt zones. Is this one of them? Certainly, the high school, that was an issue.
Yeah, definitely on the high school. I don't know, I'm trying to think, I don't...
So it's in a water protection?
I think we do use road salt on ad-water, but we might, I guess now, you know, we should look at whether or not it needs to be a low-salt zone, but, you know, we typically have done it to date.
Isn't this whole area in the water resource protection zone?
Well, it's not within the Zone 1 of the well and it's outside of Zone 3 for the water for the gravel pond.
For Stormhill Brook?
Right, so it's all within Zone 1. I don't know, 100% sure it's in Zone 2. Probably in Zone 3.
Yeah, why don't we just get clarity on whether that's a requirement? And I'm not sure, and then the second piece of the clarity is those rules change, are subject to change by the state, so I'm not sure that it is a special permit condition. The high school, it was definitely an issue that we...
So on the high school and the elementary now, I've talked to them about that and it's, they don't use a sodium chloride. I'm not even sure that they use calcium chloride, but anyway, they don't use the typical road salt. But on the roadways, we do, because it's a matter of policy.
But that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about the site. Okay, and then you had a series of, so that one we can look into, just get clarity on whether it belongs in the special permit and whether it is a low-salt, no-salt, all-salt alternative zone with state law. And then you had a whole series of things around blasting, around the blasting now and the blasting in Phase 2. So we had a lot of discussion with the fire chief and I thought we came to the conclusion that the blasting was the domain of the fire department for period.
Yeah, period, if I might.
Yep.
It's under the permit for blasting and it is under the domain of the authority of the jurisdiction of the fire department. And most of what you brought up, it's actually contained within the permit requirement. Seismograph, pre-blast survey, it's all spelled out by the state. When they go to get their permit, that they have to comply with that. So all the items that you did point out would be part of the permitting process for any blasting.
Okay, and so, and you've been doing the statutory bond and all of that, the fire chief?
Yep, we have. And just as an aside, the goal has been to do all the blasting for Phase 2 now.
Okay, so except for the mass DOT, are you done?
Except the mass DOT, which is about six days of blasting, you're completed on the site.
And you'll let us know when that's happening?
Yes.
Have you heard back from them?
As I know, you'll know.
All right, and the last suggestion was no toxic materials. I think that's...
That's a bylaw, but...
But that's a, they have, I'm sure you use things that are, you know, you must have a TSCA permit. It's a lab.
We're a low-quantity generator.
Low-quantity generator of, yeah. It's a laboratory. It seems to me that their use is a, to say no toxic materials would be a problem. I mean, we just toxic. So I think we can't...
They have to follow all sorts of rules, associate requirements and hand-wing requirements. And every material has a list of...
Okay, are there any of these that we've just discussed that others aside, Mary would like to suggest we put into the conditions? And we're going to look into the salt on them. Okay. Thank you for taking the time to do those. We're going to come back to those that we had holds on. The first was reasonable cost of the inspection of stormwater management constructed on site by an independent qualified mutually agreeable third-party professional engineer until such time as the stormwater infrastructure work is substantially complete as determined by the third-party professional engineer and the slopes and other sensitive areas are stabilized. So I think that idea there is just like we had Winston Sampson review the plans, the same process would take place. Questions?
Sarah, there is one thing that Mary just, we didn't talk about, is comprehensive project schedule submitted as a planning board. Is that something we want so that we're aware of what the intended program is?
Isn't that already on number 15 throughout the, it's basically a month-to-my-month look ahead. It's more than just the schedule. It's basically saying every month, we're going to get a, what's the major things that are going to happen.
Yeah, well, you should add to the planning department here as well.
We should, yeah, we should add planning.
And then we'll post it onto our webpage so that people can just follow.
So I think this is a really good, a broad-scope schedule, understanding what the intent is from the very beginning, so we have an idea. This is great, this is great, I always look for these, is a look-ahead schedule for a short duration from today, future, be it two weeks, be it four weeks. But a broad-scope schedule kind of tells you where you are in the larger scope of things. So it may be worth it, may be worth it, just to have it. I'm sure you've got one, a broad-scope schedule showing us what's happening in the whole picture. I don't think it's an extra effort, I just think it's something that helps us get a little more educated.
I think we actually provided some of that stuff as we went through the early presentations.
Okay.
So then, maybe we can say, how about to maintain the website, which will contain overall construction schedule?
Yeah.
Construction progress updates, overall...
We call them milestone schedules.
Yeah, milestone, milestone.
Milestone schedule.
Is there a reason it's just for Phase 1?
Because Phase 2 is not yet planned out in any substantive way.
We should reference Phase 2 as well.
Yeah, reference the timing.
Okay. Okay, any other, we're talking about number 2, reasonable cost for inspection of stormwater.
Yeah, thank you.
Hold on that?
I put a hold on that, I think because I was just having trouble with the wording.
We're going to send this to Town Council, who will help Ward Smith with this. Okay, number 3.
I have a question, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. On that one, so slope stabilization and some of those other things are, they're vegetated, they're not happening until the end of the project, which is close to substantial completion typically?
That is not correct.
No, you're doing all the vegetation early?
We've actually already done some slope vegetation already. Hydroceded, we started building the burn, the plenty property that had been hydroceded. We're also hydroceded some of the southern areas that once we created them off. So the goal is, as we disturb and put back, it all is hydroceded and stabilized.
So that's good, because there'll be less propensity for erosion over that time. Is there a final inspection that happens then? You go back around the site, you know, at the time of the final affidavit? Are you inspecting the full site?
There's two levels. At the end, the third quarter of next year, the site itself around the outside of the perimeter will be fully stabilized. Final plantings, grasses, inside the ring road where the building is happening, all of that landscaping and hardscaping will take place after the building is built.
Okay.
But the perimeter, which is where our risk is on erosion control, will all be stabilized.
And the final affidavit will come at the end of the project, at which point there'll be at least an inspection of the full site. So it will be an inspection and we're holding the $250,000 letter of credit. So if that, we could release in its entirety, but we also could release it... Well, that was going to be my comment when we got to that one, was just that I think we need some protection if, you know, a major storm comes through or something and site has been vegetated and completed, but damage happens and erosion is caused. We would need some protection through, I think, you know, the final affidavits and CVO.
So the contract requires erosion control until sign-off at the final affidavit.
Yeah.
So even though the site will be stabilized and vegetated around the perimeter, which is where our risk is, they won't sign off until the entire of the site.
Through your NFTs permit, you've got regular inspections happening and all of that. Okay, thank you. Okay, hours of construction.
Yeah, so our general bylaw has hours of construction, 8 to 6, and no work is permitted on state and federal holidays. So I don't think we can change what's in the general bylaw in a condition.
You can't change what's in the general bylaw, but should the applicant go to the select board and have that approved by the select board, then your permit is consistent with whatever they got approved by the select board. So if you put a later date and then they go to the select board and they feel that it ought to be, then they'd have to come back here. So that's why it's at 7, that's what they requested.
But I think they already did that. They already went to the select board and the select board sent you back to the planning board.
What we're trying to do is, as we explained, is make sure that the early construction traffic doesn't interfere with the school arrivals and departures, or arrivals, I guess. So that's what that's all about. But we're also, obviously, we don't have any direct residential abutters. We've got the buzz of 1:28 early in the morning. So we're not, even if we're sort of starting up a truck or something, we're not going to be within earshot of anybody.
No, and I understand why you want it. I'm just saying that we have a general bylaw that lists it out. And I know we had this discussion already at the planning board and we went to the select board and the select board said, "Come back to the planning board."
No, no, no.
They just didn't take it up.
They said that they didn't believe that there was anything they could do. And they suggested that the bylaw needs to be revised because most construction projects start earlier and nobody's paying attention to your general bylaw. That's sadly...
So, yeah, and there's a lot of bylaws that need to be adjusted. So we could put that on the list, but actually, the general bylaws isn't us, so...
So I think that there's, it's the way I look at it, this is my own opinion, not the Board's opinion. First of all, construction hours in general are 7. I asked Chuck what his construction hours are and he often starts at 7. His projects start at 7. We do have the school-street traffic issue. And I also called a neighbor of the special permit, the last special permit we did for earth removal, and asked what time they start and they start at 7. So the general bylaws are not being enforced across the town. That doesn't mean they don't apply where they apply. The other thing is that this condition says hours of construction. So I'm going to leave it, my personal view is that the applicant can decide that the workers arrive. They can hammer nails, they can, because the general bylaw says that it's heavy equipment, pavement breakers or pile drivers, or construction demolition. So I think that's different than, I'm reading it right now. So that's different than hours of construction, which is when your site opens and deliveries arrive and all those things. So I think for the moment, we might let them both stand and let the select board take it up as a potential, as a safety issue around...
I have a suggestion. Construction should not begin prior to 7.
Isn't the same?
No, I think it's different, because it could be at 8 if that's what it ends up being. And that's what we're really concerned about.
And so don't forget, we're going to send this to Town Council and I'm going to let, I would suggest that we let them add any language. But I do think the general bylaws is a subset of construction and that we might kind of leave it at that. That's my strong recommendation. This was, yeah, this is a, I think to change, to require that the applicant start construction at 8 of all construction is a hardship.
I would agree with that, considering right now Pleasant Street starts at 7:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
With machines, with digging, with everything. I happen to know it because I live one block up. I can't get out of, I can't get out of the street.
So, well, I...
We can take a bone on, this is, I told you my opinion, not the Board's opinion, so...
I think it's, I guess then it's confusing, right? Because I guess... Yeah. I think it's, I guess then it's confusing, right? Because I guess, sure, you can start construction at seven, but it can't be with any heavy equipment.
Can't be heavy equipment, pavement breakers, or pile drivers, as Sarah said.
Right. So then, I mean, I guess there's really no reason to put that in if, you know, if we're just still going to go by the bylaw. But if you have it in, I think you have to be consistent with the holidays. And then, I thought last time when we talked about blasting, though we kind of don't have any blasting left, there was a discussion at, that it was 10:00 AM.
That was a misnomer. It was recorded incorrect. That had to do with state permit for the mass DOT permit does not allow blasting before 10:00 AM. In fact, there are, by recall, are 10 to 2, you know, the blasting time allowed in that 128.
And that's the only blasting you have left anyway, right?
Correct.
So it could be 10:00. Because this is just for Phase One and Phase Two. Okay. So I think if we, if we put that to 10:00, and you have to add in state holidays, and then it matches.
Why wouldn't we let the state law dictate the blasting hours? I guess I'm, I mean, you don't, I just hate to have the applicant be hamstrung. You're putting in that utility corridor, and there needs to be blasting before 10:00 to keep it, you know.
And I'm kind of just, I'm going from, we've had many residents in here with issues with the blasting. So I'm trying to listen to residents, as we say we always do. And I know they've had concerns with start time, calling the police, and I know they've had concerns with blasting. So I'm just trying to be an advocate for residents that those were some of the issues, and thus this number three is addressing that. And I think everything we can do for that, we should.
And for the record, I don't believe we've had a single blast before 10:00 AM anywhere. It's just not practiced.
Well, at this point, if the only blasting is left is in the corridor.
So why not just say 10:00?
That's fine.
10:00 AM? All right.
That's fine.
And.
And then it's state and federal holidays.
Earlier than 10:00 AM or? So that just blasting is prohibited on state?
Just blasting, okay.
No, 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 I'm just, well, I'm just, oh, I don't know about blasting, but I'm just going by, let's see. During construction, all local, state, and federal, hours of construction shall be from 8:00 to 5:00 on Saturdays, and no work is permitted on Sundays and federal holidays. You just need to add federal and state holidays.
Well, I think we talked about that previously, because state has a lot more holidays than federal.
Yes. And usually, with this type of work, half the construction force does not recognize most of the state holidays. In fact, even some of the federal holidays. Veterans say they've worked. So that would be, I think, the major holiday.
Gordon, how about, what are you, you've been in the industry. What's your opinion about adding in state holidays? No work permitted on state holidays?
I worked on the design and construction management side of it, not so much the construction side of it like that. But working holidays was not unusual, fairly not unusual.
The other thing too is that no work is permitted, once you get inside the building, there's, I mean, you're thinking of this as the noise producing work, but once you get in, once the building is enclosed, you're going to have people there.
As much as you can.
As much as you can. And so it seems.
So, I mean, and we have a general bylaw, so if there was any issue.
Then they can enforce them.
Then the police would just have to come and say, you can't work on the state holiday, right? I guess. Because that's what it says in the general.
You can't do those activities.
Can't do those noisy pile breaker things.
So Mary, we've suggested on three, I'm trying to keep, to change it to 10:00 AM, no blasting earlier than 10:00 AM. Is there agreement across, any disagreement on that? And then I think I'm hearing the consensus is to leave out state holidays from number three. Is that the consensus? I, Mary, I heard you say you wanted to put it in, but others, anybody else want to advocate for putting state holidays in number three? Okay, I'm not hearing it. So let's keep moving here in terms of, number eight was, I had a hold on the stormwater management system as depicted on the plans.
I just, I just didn't know why we weren't referencing our bylaw or MS Stormwater, you know, stormwater management, MS4, and, you know, why any of that language wasn't in here.
So the plans do reference the storm, a stormwater plan that was reviewed by Weston Sampson. This, I guess my, we could reference the stormwater bylaw, but it is a bylaw. Thus, it applies. So, yeah.
To me, I see this as referencing the order of conditions, which is specific to this project. If we start referencing other bylaws, we're going to leave some out.
That's right.
And so I think the bylaws could just stand on their own and not be referenced, but we certainly need to reference the order of conditions, because it is specific to this project.
Yep. The stormwater management system, as outlined in the order of conditions.
Sure, Laura, would you mind just repeating that? We should not reference the.
I think we should not reference general bylaws, because the general bylaws exist, and they govern everything.
And they're there no matter what.
They're here no matter what. So if we start pointing to some, but not others, we are committing some.
Right. You run into that danger.
And we run the danger of being in conflict with our general bylaws, whereas if we say nothing, they apply.
Yeah.
But we do specifically need to reference the order of conditions, which the COMCOM has provided as a.
That's specific to us.
Specific requirement for this project.
Right, and that's local bylaws, that's local and state.
I guess just, what about the case like we're in right now, where our stormwater bylaw is not up to date? And so if we were to say, you know, stormwater management per MS4 regulations, or whatever that is, even if we haven't adopted the latest ones, I don't know. It just, it seems that we're, I don't know, there just seems to be something missing here, but I can't put my finger on it.
Again, town council will review this. So if they have a suggestion, we can incorporate that. The next issue that I had a hold on was number 15. For the construction process, designated representative of the applicant shall regularly monthly, you have a construction schedule, there'll be a website, which will contain the overall milestone schedule, we just added that, and construction progress updates and other information, which may be useful to the community. And the webpage will include a contact information for a designated representative of the applicant. Sue.
So I just wanted to get a sense for who the designated representative would be, not a name, but the position.
Their responsibility.
Right. An attorney, someone with the, what are you thinking? Who is that person going to be, the person?
Thus far, it's been Greg, the general, who works for, you know, construction manager.
Okay.
I think we haven't necessarily sorted out exactly whether it should be Jess Greg or others. But he's the most, he's the closest to the boots on the ground and what's actually happening on site.
Okay.
Do you want to sort of clarify with, you know, designated representative with, with knowledge of the construction process, or with?
Yes.
With direct knowledge of?
Somehow, yes.
Okay. Construction progress.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay?
Great, sorry.
Yeah. Any other comments on that section? I think that's it. No, it's not it. We have an opportunity, any other general comments from the board?
I assume that we're going, this is going to be couched within a document, the permit itself.
Yes.
Which is going to do the findings and the criteria and everything else.
We also need to include the waivers.
And the waivers, yeah.
Yep.
Have we agreed on the waivers?
We saw the waivers on the.
Pardon me?
The waivers list.
At one point, I submitted a short little waiver list, and I think we need to go back and review it. And I would, I would think that at the time, hopefully, there'll be a time when the special permit and site plan approval are voted on, together with these conditions, and with the waivers separately. And so I'll resubmit the waiver list. My understanding is that Mark is going to pick all your comments and edit the conditions. I don't know whether you're planning to submit that to town council before or after we agree on the final version.
After, yeah. I don't want to submit it prematurely and make another round.
If you, if you get it back to us, we'll get it right back to you, and then you can submit it to town council.
I have the waiver list.
You do? Yes.
Sarah, may I ask one question here?
Okay. So I think they're pretty simple. They are the hours, which we just talked about, to allow, and they wanted it to start at 6:30, just, which I think we talked about. The second is to allow reduction in parking by virtue of all parking spaces size. We talked about that a long time ago. Yep. To allow a deviation in the sizing and location of signs set forth in section 6.2.4. Is that like a sign for?
I think we're.
Was that in your application, the sign?
I think it was. And I think that there's a question of whether or not, there must have been something about the location or size of the sign that was inconsistent. But I'll go back and look at that.
If you can give us the details on that one.
We're also intending, I think, to have some sort of signage at the, at the intersection of Atwater and School Street. And I don't know whether that's going to be on the existing sign that is called a Bible sign, or whatever that's.
Ladder, ladder sign.
Ladder sign?
Yeah.
I don't know.
That would comply with sign by law. So the question is, where is your sign, where is the deviation in the sizing and location of the sign?
That would be off premises. And I think there's a limitation on off premises signs.
If you can clarify those for us. And then the last one, which we also talked about in the landscaping plans, to allow reduction in depth of topsoil from six inches to four inches in the upper meadow portion of the project.
I have a question, not related to any of those.
Okay, so that's a waiver list. I think we have to, we're clear on all of them except the sizing and location of signs.
And we need to go back at this point and confirm that that's the complete waiver list.
All right. First, Gordon had a comment.
Yeah, my question, my question is pretty simple. We're referencing occupancy in here. Are you, are you planning having phased occupancy by any chance? Like completing a portion of the building prior to the entire building and then occupy it? Or will be, finish Phase One, occupy the whole thing, and start operating?
It'd be certainly, we would finish Phase One and then occupy it. I wouldn't say necessarily fully occupy it. I'm sure we would plan to, you know, begin Phase Two prior to Phase One, being at full capacity, certainly.
But you don't have, you won't open a portion of the laboratory space to start work before the rest of the building is done and occupied?
Not envisioned that way right now.
Not playing that word right now?
Not envisioned right now.
Okay. Because that makes a difference about these certificate of occupancy and substantial completion and all that stuff that you guys worry about.
Okay. Laura?
My question was about Phase Two, and wonder if this just needs a clause to say, what happens at Phase Two, which is a much more modest scope of site work, but there is still some site work. So do we need this to say anything about that?
I was thinking that we should have a sort of a, I don't know what is, a touch base at the commencement of Phase Two, or some, I'm not sure what the right legal, sort of a confirmation, a meeting, a submission of the, any changes to the plans that are submitted. We have a Phase Two plan now, but it might be some modifications when you get.
You could, you could add a condition saying that prior to the commencement of work on Phase Two, that we submit any deviations from the plans, and that if need be, we come to the planning board to review the project.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then all the conditions in here still apply on Phase Two? Okay.
Except where they're found specifically. And maybe we should say, conditions apply through Phase Two. Phase Two. Special permit gets recorded with a D, right?
Mm-hmm. At the registry.
Yeah. For Phase Two. Okay. Submit any deviations.
I love all the exhibits.
Okay. Let's, I can find my Zoom, people. Any public comment? I'm not seeing any. Oh, two. Somebody identifying themselves as Manchester by the C1. Who is that?
Yes, hi, this is Roland Goeden, 54 Forest Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So my question is just about the timing. I heard a comment about, maybe 10 minutes ago, that there's a lot of traffic noise on 128, and that there's no adjoining or rebutting neighbors and the like. And I just want to point out that that really is not true. I mean, when you're doing pile driving up there, I hear that loudly and clearly at my house. And I, for one, would appreciate not having that start at 7:00 in the morning as what you're discussing, and, you know, having a later start time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that, that would go with the 8:00 AM bylaw.
Okay, there was also a comment, a hand raised from Manchester by the C1. Who is that?
How was that? How was that?
What?
That person we just spoke with.
No, he didn't. That was.
Owner.
Owner. Is that, no, Mary's on.
I don't see another one.
Maybe that's me. Let's see. Oh, look at that. It's me. I don't think I put my hand up. Okay. I'm not hearing any more public comment. Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we continue. We have another public hearing on the next meeting, which is the 25th of November. Is that right?
Yes.
It's the Monday of Thanksgiving week. Do you have any attendance from, anybody not able to attend? Okay, so we'll, what time is that hearing posted for?
6:30.
That's on this project again?
No, it's on another project. Is that going to be, take us a long time?
Proctor Street. It's a tear down of the house.
It's an earth removal and fill permit. There's, it's a very simple project for single family house on Proctor Street. It shouldn't take that long, but never know.
Yeah. So we probably will want to do a site walk, get the applicant, and then do a site walk, and then.
There is a site walk scheduled for that project with the zoning board for this Saturday.
I think we're busy getting ready for that meeting. Yeah, Saturday's a bad time. So let's, let's continue to 7:00 with this hearing.
I won't be here on the 25th.
Have you missed one?
No, I didn't. Yeah, I did miss one, but I.
No, we continue that day. We didn't miss.
It was one of the ones where we just voted to continue. It was one of the ones where we just voted to continue.
Continue, we are okay.
We didn't take any...
Okay.
If it turns out, it's one of those.
All right. Yeah, I think we'll continue to 7 o'clock on the 25th. I think we're pretty close. So I think we will have a near-final version with all of the preamble. And we will hopefully have a dollar value from our Chuck and his colleagues. Maybe we can wrap this thing up. That'd be exciting.
I would miss that.
We're gonna... The goal is to wrap it up on the 25th.
That would be great, but...
I'll say it.
I'm not gonna count on it.
Okay. I'll have a motion to continue the cell signaling Old Quarry... Old Quarry Lane, Old Quarry...
Old Quarry LLC.
Old Quarry LLC to November 25th at 7:00 PM. So move second?
Second.
We can make a vote, but well, Gordon?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Sarah votes yes?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Laura votes yes, thank you. Okay. Great, thank you. We have a few other items of business. So...
Oh, yeah, there you go.
The first is that the...
Nice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Thanks for coming again.
Thank you. See you.
I won't tell you what I just saw, by the way. They've got an artist rendition of what the Atwater Avenue would look like with the wooden...
Well, it's right up there.
And that looks better than it does now.
They've got a paved surface up here, isn't it? But yeah. Actually, they got it on two sides.
Okay, so we... At the last... Some weeks ago, we heard from... About the... Before the CPC had voted and whether we knew... We didn't know if the Normandy Long Hill property was going to be on the warrant or not. So we limited our vote to recommending that the town purchase a conservation easement. And I wanted you to see if we wanted to expand our support to recommending approval of the article. So the article is... The article... But we were asked to do this by...
Planning board needs to give them a recommendation on land acquisition.
Right, we did that. Because it's not a land acquisition, it's a... It's that we did that, which is a conservation.
Yeah, it's a conservation restriction, but it's, you know, it's some of the rights, property rights. So what you did last time was to recommend that Manchester hold a conservation restriction on the Long Hill Normandy property if submitted... If presented by the CPC to town meeting.
Yeah.
So although it's pretty clear, I think we discussed about just having...
Right.
The formal vote just that says, now that it's been presented to town meeting, saying that the planning board recommends that town meeting approve Article 1.
Article 1, I have it up on the screen.
Okay.
So Article 1 is see if to... A permanent conservation restriction on three parcels for the sum of $250,000.
So does the town own a portion of it?
No, the town owns the conservation restriction.
So does the town have unlimited access to it?
Unlimited access, yeah. But the town... A conservation restriction, I think as Chris from Greenbelt described, it's not... You know, we can't use it for a 40B or a EPW garage or something like that. It is a... So I will ask for a motion to recommend... And Sue, you have to abstain.
Because you're on the...
No, because it's already in my house.
That's right.
So the motion is to... For the planning board to recommend Article 1. I move too. So Laura recommends...
I'm sorry, can I just ask one quick question?
Sorry. Okay, can I get a second and then we'll take a question second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, question?
The CPC... What is... What are the assets of the CPC? No, I know, no, but how much is...
Oh, well, I'm not sure exactly how much is in the bank right now, but it's probably half a million dollars.
So that is... This $250,000 is from...
I believe so, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yep. So then we... Sorry, go ahead. There's no additional cost at this time to the town?
Money's been...
It's been... It's just...
It's been taken from...
Right. Right, okay.
Doesn't the CPC try to bring down the money every year?
Yes.
Yeah. So it doesn't... I think some can rule, but I don't...
There's a percent of our taxes go to the CPC, which is matched a little bit by the state, which is...
And it's on a calendar year?
It's on a fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
All right.
So what we're doing is capturing money that was left over from unused funds.
Yeah.
And then last fiscal.
This has now been voted by the Conservation Commission, the CPC, the FinCom and Board of Selectmen, I think. Select Board.
Selectmen and maybe a couple of boards. Open space, like I said.
Mark, can you just explain what buying a conservation restriction is?
So... Yes. Sarah can explain a little bit.
So there's... If you want... If there's a... There's two pieces to land. One is the ownership. You own, you know, 30 acres. And then the conservation restriction is buying the development rights, basically, or restricting the use of, in some way. So it's saying... And the reason it has monetary value is because absent it, it could be 30 house lots or whatever the...
Well, that would be if the Green Belt allowed it to happen as the owner of the land.
But the Green Belt could sell it. The Green Belt could sell it or...
It could, yeah.
And it's a way to monetize... Pay to not develop. So conservation restrictions can be on your land, my land, forest land.
Yellowstone.
What?
Yellowstone. They just did a conservation restriction.
Yeah, well...
Everywhere.
So...
Can... But they're using the $250,000 to buy the land.
To buy... So the land... It's part of the funding mechanism.
Right. So I mean, but it's... Because when we first talked about it, it was taking $250,000 of CPC funds to buy land. And now the wording's changed to buy the conservation restriction.
So they are spending $3 million to buy over 300 and someone acres of land. It's a single purchase. So they're pooling many sources of funds into the pool to purchase the property by making our contribution or assisting them in purchasing the property. But we are going to be receiving the conservation restriction, which has the value of $1.3 million. So we will receive the conservation restriction, which restricts the development of the property so that it is quote "conservation land." The other thing that restricts it is the state is contributing over a million dollars. That also adds another layer of protection to the property as well.
It's part of the funding puzzle for the...
So is it a conservation restriction, like Newport Park is conservation restricted?
Yes.
So you can swap out land?
Well, I don't know if Newport Park is actually conservation restricted, but if it's...
I'm sorry, Powder House.
Powder House.
Powder House, yeah.
But it also... It may or may not have a conservation restriction, but depending on how it's held, it's subject to what's called Article 97, which means it needs the legislature to undo it.
That's municipal and state. This is not gonna be Article 97. But a conservation restriction is importability.
Right.
So it... And it has... The entity who holds the conservation restriction is the one who's supposed to ensure that someone doesn't go out there and build a garden shed if it's not allowed by the restriction.
Take down the garden shed.
Well, if you were encroaching on... If your land wasn't... No, if your land was encroaching. So that's typically in a case where a private owner owns my... You know, owns a farm, 10 acres, and then makes... Puts a conservation restriction on all but the little house lot. Moraine Farm, for example, has a conservation... Is owned by the trustees of reservations and has a conservation restriction that is owned by Greenbells. And so Greenbell goes out and monitors that. And from time to time, having been involved in that particular property, from time to time, there's like encroachment on the conservation... You know, things that are not allowed in that by the conservation restriction that is in the deed. An example is a shed that from the farmer there puts up on the land that is not supposed to have buildings. So it's a way... It's a legal way and you can enforce it. You can tell people not to do that. So... But it's part... In this case, it's part of the funding mechanism. But in the absence of that, you know, you think of Greenbell as a... They are a conservation group. But there is nothing to protect... To prevent them except their reputation to... From selling off a house lot to fund this project or the next project. But a conservation restriction does protect that.
So do they have a conservation... For what's the distinction? Yeah, on the rest of the property that they're purchasing?
Yes.
No, they can't...
Yeah, I think it's Gloucester.
They can't own the conservation easement, they own the land. You can't be the owner and the holder of the easement.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm not sure if I know the answer to that.
My question is, do the other...
Yeah, in Gloucester, yeah. I think that's what the state is... The state made by Gloucesters.
I think their purchase in the land is in Manchester Essex Conservation Trust, holding some of the...
They're holding some of the CRs.
The CRs. I think the City of Gloucester is holding some of the CRs in Gloucester side. So there's several layers of...
It's a very complex deal.
Yeah.
But it's also a deal that's been like 30 years in the making.
So I have a couple of points to make about this. I'm not crazy about... I think the idea of it is good. One... A couple of things bother me. One of them is the City of Gloucester isn't putting up any money to do this deal, although they've been active in supporting it and so forth. The second thing is that not only are we putting up $250,000 to buy the land, but we're foregoing $17,000 in real estate taxes that are gonna be taken away now. So... It's just something to think about. And that was one of the comments from the FinCom, actually, was that we should be aware of the... There's more to the cost than just our...
Or more if it was developed.
Well, yeah. Well, yeah. Yes, could be, yeah. So some members of the Select Board would like to see a deal put together that maybe three lots out of it be, you know, five acres get developed and the rest of it go to the Conservation Commission. But there probably isn't time to do that. I just wanted to put a little context.
Yeah, they have a purchase and sale that has to be executed in January. So, yeah, this is not...
That's why it's coming out of sequence of the usual CPC money.
Yes.
So they had raised privately about half of their goal, right? There was a piece of that, what, $500,000 maybe or $700,000 that they were trying to raise individually?
Yeah.
So we're doing them a solid by directing this money there.
Did they put the rest together?
Well, it's open to the public.
That's true, I know.
I mean, it's the town that benefits from it.
Right.
Yeah. So it's not as if we're giving something to Greenbell and we get no benefit for it.
I mean, it's a fairly heavily... I walked up there the other day and... Yeah. I mean, it's a well... I mean, it's good... There are lots of trails. There's... One of the other things that will... I expect will happen is that I got lost the other day. That they'll start to be like a, you know, some signs and...
Trail system.
Trail, it'll be on maps and things.
So how do you... How do you access it? Because we park... We walk in Dexter Park all the time. We go to that last spot up on the top of Colburn. So would you just walk in from there and access it that way?
It's part... It's a bunch of pieces, parcels, all in there.
All right.
So, okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Have a show of hands on favor.
What is the motion?
The motion is to recommend Article 1. Sue will be abstaining. All in favor? Okay.
May I for Chris?
Six. Five and a half. Six, four and one abstentions.
Six, oh, one.
Thank you.
So also, now I can talk about it. I was gonna say, what about... What isn't a butterfield or think? Well, it's pretty... I mean, I have no worries that it's gonna be developed. There's right behind my house is all wetlands. But what I was gonna say is right on the other... There's a stream next to the end of my yard and then there's a little parking area. So right on Moating Place Road, you can actually pull in and walk in there also in addition to buying the...
Thank you. Yeah.
Love the plan. Okay. Last order of business is the approval of minutes from October 28.
I did not see those in our packet.
Yeah, those... We're gonna edit those one more time before we send them around. Because Shannon took the minutes.
There were some minutes in our packet, maybe that wasn't...
Oh, were they?
I did not see it.
I think they appeared quite late, actually.
I checked at 5:00 and I didn't see it.
Oh, okay. So we'll wait on minutes.
I would just ask that you wait on those.
Okay, great. Any other matters?
So we haven't discussed town meeting.
Is that one?
I mean, I know, I'm sure there's been discussions, but we haven't, as a board, discussed town meeting.
What?
We used to, but I think they've changed that.
I think the task force is...
We have to move the motion and second the emotion.
And I think we've been, for the last several town meetings, the chair has been saying... Who has been requesting somebody to speak on our behalf. So Sue has agreed to speak on planning board's behalf.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get the stuff in public meetings, not behind the scenes. So just like we've always done and like the Select Board does, is we discuss who's moving the motion or moving the article, making the motion, whatever the term is.
We've never discussed it.
We've always discussed it.
I never had a for.
The recertification, because you kind of have to put it on when it's handed at town meeting, who's...
Yeah, Ron has always done it. He's assigned.
We've discussed it.
Well, I would suggest that Sue... That Chris moves the motion and Sue seconds.
I'm on me.
Okay. Any other matters? Any other matters?
Well, I have an outstanding email to you about the underlying zoning. And I also think there's, I just came across it, that's... I mean, I can either email it to you or we can talk about it now. Is I think in the draft bylaw, there's two sections that contradict each other on the underlying zoning.
Okay.
Who might put us in a pickle? I'll email you.
Tell me now or email it or...
I can... I'll email you.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Hi, Captain.
In favor? Thank you.
Thank you.